Order with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Welcome, everyone. Roll call, Mr. Lombard.
Om.
Yes.
Odi.
Yep.
Peglin.
Yes.
Klatt.
Yes.
All right. If there are no additions, changes into the agenda, I would entertain a motion to approve the agendas presented tonight. So moved.
Second.
There's been a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. I do not believe we had any conflict of interest disclosure, waiver request tonight. So that takes us to community input. We have a guest with us tonight, Mr. Larry Volmer from the Volunteers of America.
How's this? Okay. My background, well, we won't even go. We'll get to this a little bit later on. It's not important. Shirley and I are here representing Volunteers of America tonight. And I think to give some clarity, some, a bit of a foundation for why we're here, I'd like to, with your permission, read a letter. Now, this dates me, this goes back to 2011. A letter to former Superintendent Pepon, long time ago. And this was written on July of 2011. Dear Mr. Pepon, since February of 2010, my wife and I have been involved with the Brandon Valley School System in conjunction with Volunteers of America. It was through the foresight of Karen Hyden, Robert Bennett Elementary, that this relationship was made possible. My involvement has been exclusively the Read Naturally program, while Shirley is spread over RTI, Sando, and some Read Naturally. With my experience as a CEO of various companies, and Shirley's background as an elementary school teacher, we have been able to apply our skills to these programs. According to our qualitative analysis supported by RBE staff, our efforts have yielded very positive results with the most challenged students. This would not have been possible without the support of Mrs. Hyden. Her commitment to our efforts has been extraordinary. She has allowed me to innovate while staying within the basic foundation of Read Naturally. Shirley and I have been able to observe Karen's management style over the past year and a half, and our admiration for her continues to grow. She is committed beyond words to her students' academic and personal growth. She handles tough issues with a calm, yet firm result. The teachers have the utmost respect and affection for her responding positively to her leadership and authority. And I'm having difficulty because I don't have either glasses and I have stigmatism, so bear with me. I'm okay. We are looking forward to another year with Robert Bennett Elementary. Since our retirement two years ago in Brandon, we have been most impressed with the focus on academics and the extraordinary activities involved, offered your students at all grade levels. As residents of the community, we are proud of your continued effort in keeping Brandon at the forefront academically while facing difficult financial challenges. Please accept our best wishes for a successful 2011-2012 term. Now, that's been awhile. Six years later, almost exactly six years later, we're still here. We're going to be here next year, but Mrs. Hyden is going to be riding off into the sunset, which she will be able to do with 60 horses. That will not be a problem. Now, Karen has meant so much that I could talk all night about this, but just a few points. She is steadfast in everything she does. She could be up to her ears in alligators, and if you walk into her office and you have a matter, it's maybe not the most, the highest priority matter, she takes those items that are of high priority, sets them aside for the moment, and all of a sudden, you are the focal point of the day. She is absolutely committed beyond words, and we're going to miss her unbelievably. Now, she has done a wonderful job of mentoring, okay, her replacement of her will, her successor, with Mrs. Hofcamp, who I think is going to carry on Karen's legacy and develop her own, and that's a good fit for her. But Karen has done so much. She's the only person that I know that could be cleaning up something off the floor in the dining area and still not lose that presence as the principal. Nobody says, "What is she doing down there?" It's like, this is who I am. And this is not to denigrate anyone who's cleaning up the floor, because I clean my bathrooms at home. So, this is the way she carries herself. To digress a little longer, I remember, and I've always remembered this, and Karen may not, she may not recall, but this was like the second year, I think, that we were here. And I was back in what is now a 4th grade classroom, but it was a place for furniture. So I had about 1/4 of that room, okay, for my students. And it was also the place where everybody had, where they misplaced their gloves, or their shoes, or their jackets, or whatever. That was a wonderful storage area. Well, what would happen? And this would be during recess typically, and students would then come in and think they had the wear with all while I was in the process of teaching. I must have mentioned that to Karen, I think, just one time. It wasn't a big thing. I wasn't making anything out of this. Excuse me. The next day, I look in, and here's Karen outside the door. She's like the Royal Guard, making sure that nobody gets in. Now, I swear, and she may not remember this, but I don't forget things like this. And that was the end of it. Nobody ever came in after that. It was so extraordinarily rare for that to happen. But this was Karen. And I think, what in God's name, when she's out there, I mean, I swear, it's like, bring it on. If you want to come, take your best shot. But she, with students, it's, she just, she has such an equilibrium about her that it's just so impressive. And she cares. She cares about the students. As I said, Shirley and I have been here eight years. We're retired. She's younger than we are. We're going to come back. She's going. Who makes those, put your head around that. She deserves everything. Everything. She has, and she has the utmost respect for all, the whole school district herself. It's never, it's not that provincial. She is proper Bennett Elementary, takes great pride in that accomplishment. She holds staff, the feet to the fire. They're all friends, close. She maintains that presence that one has to have as a principal. And that's just, that is so extraordinarily important. But she is so supportive, and we just appreciate all the time we've had been with her. And as I said, her legacy carries forward, and we're just so, we're so extremely proud. And, of course, it should be mentioned, and you probably already know, we have never taken one penny. We do not receive any income from the school district. Not a nickel. So this has all been our thing, because to us, it's all about the kids. And we've got kids now that have graduated this year that we work with. That's how old we are. Okay. So, I would like, if we could, if I'm known and if I can hear, if we can, Karen, pump them up for just a minute, please.
We'd like to give this certificate to Karen, and it reads, "This certificate is awarded to Karen Hyden in recognition for eight years of support of the Foster Grandparent Program, sponsored by Volunteers of America Dakotas." Robert Bennett Elementary, Brandon, South Dakota. And then it has the 2005 through 2012 distinguished classification, 2013, 2016 ex-ple- (laugh) I'm a 1st grade teacher. Don't go beyond that classification. And 2017 National Blue Ribbon Classification. And it's signed by Cindy Beard and Rebecca Delble, from Volunteers of America.
We couldn't get to a horse. Thank you.
Thank you very, very much for sharing that with us tonight. All right. That takes us to general business. And our first items we have there are under administration reports and the summer lunch program with Director of Child Nutrition, Gay Anderson.
Well, hi there. I know you've got some information that's on the slides, and if you have any questions while I'm talking about this, go ahead and feel free to interrupt me. I'm going to be pretty brief here, just talking about, there's a lot of excitement, actually, coming from this. I'm glad that you approved this a few months ago when we proposed the summer lunch program. And with that, just want to give you an update on where we stand to date. Starting on next Tuesday, I expect to have about 125 kids walking in the door for our first meal. And that is going to be a soft day, a soft week, because we've got all the daycares in town that are actually going to be working with us. We're, I have two more to pin down as far as times and numbers, but on some of our highest days, without anybody else walking in off the street, the ones that we know of through Youth Enrichment Services, EL, program, and then our planned daycares, our biggest day right now, we have about 195 that's coming in. And that's without these other two daycares that have about another potential of 60 kids. So I kind of think it's a situation where many people in the past have thought this is for just feeding those that are very needy, the free and reduced. This is not a situation like this. This is a community program. So we're serving meals to anybody under the age of 18. They can walk in. It's nothing to do with their socioeconomic status. And we've actually had, I've had a lot of parents calling, asking questions about it. So you mean, like, if my kids are sitting at home and we don't have, they don't, we don't want them eating macaroni and cheese all summer long, we can let them walk in your door. We don't have to call and sign up for anything. My staff, I'm meeting with them tomorrow night, or tomorrow afternoon. We have to have a mandatory training in there. And with that, we're going to be working with, talking about some of the different things we have to do as far as the civil rights and some of the rules and regs that go with that. Summer feeding, I didn't know before I started this, that it's 10 times more paperwork to just get the application approved. Had I known that, I probably would have run hiding the other, or going the other direction. But we did get our application recently approved. And with that, our reimbursement is, so you do know, higher than what we currently get for like a free student's meal. That, this year, we're at $3.22, but for the summer feed, summer lunch program, actually, it's going to be $3.74 for a meal. And so it's actually going to be something very beneficial. We can kind of tweak the meal pattern a little bit differently and give them some extra treats, which are surprising. If anybody does want to have a meal and join us over the age of 18, it's $4 cash at the door. Anybody else there, people are welcome there. We are not doing these meal counts. We're winging it. It's kind of like what we do every day. We kind of have a, we've got feeling on, this is how many are coming. We kind of go, roll with the numbers. And I'm actually going to be offering two different entrees each day. So if for some reason the number's just skyrocket, we've got, we'll always have a sandwich backup in place. Plus, the ovens are going to be going. We can always filter in more food and figure out how to get it there. Some questions came up with some of the various people involved, talking about, how are you going to handle things with any students that might come in with known allergies? If they're within our district, I already have the paperwork and documentation. If they're going to the daycares, they have paperwork and documentation, and actually, all of them. The only one we're running into consistently is the peanut tree nut allergy, and we don't serve anything with peanut or tree nut within our district, so we're pretty safe there. But if somebody would come in and say, "My child has a milk allergy," we'll work around it, or anything like that. We do have the right to ask some, if there's any misbehavior, we have the right to ask them to leave and not come back. That is one of the rules of the summer meal program. And the other thing that's different, nobody can take food off-site. So whatever they have, they come in, they have to take it, going through the line first time. They won't be able to come back for free fruits and vegetables, or any seconds, like we do now currently. So you grab your whole meal at one time, and it's a one and done deal. You sit down and eat it. No food can be taken off-site. It has to remain on premises. And so we'll also be monitoring to make sure parents aren't eating off of other people, off the children's trays, which we found has happened in some different districts. Basically, it's a no-brainer in my mind. It's pretty simple, straightforward. We're going to be doing this for 48 days. And I just look forward to seeing this as a pilot program, that it's, I really believe it's going to be a success. My goal was, I wanted 100 students to be able to do this on a regular basis, and we're starting over 100, with 125. Questions?
Sure. I'm excited for this program too, and commend you for all the work that you put in. I know it's been a lot of work, so, great job. How much is a meal going to cost you? I know what the reimbursement rate is, but about how much is a meal really going to cost?
Okay. On average, our regular lunches run about $1.63 a plate. And then when you figure, we have to account for the labor factor in there. So if we factor that in, there's going to be, for lack of better wording, probably a little bit of gravy in this. So, you know, on average, most of my meals are right at that $1.63 mark. So, and I was calculating some of them out tonight at my desk here, and just with what they take, if they take everything, it'll be right there. I don't see anything, anything more than that. So...
What are the hours that you're operating?
We're approved for 11 to 12:30. And if for some reason we, at 12:30, they mean you cannot let, at 12:30, we cannot feed anybody. Again, that's some rules there. But if we see that we need to expand, I can write in and have an addendum with the state and have them approve that within a day. And so we could expand that to 1 o'clock if we feel it's necessary. I thought it'd be better to start short and expand, rather than to start big and go, oh, we're sitting here twiddling our thumbs if we maybe.
So does that mean people have to be out of the building at 12:30, or they have to be through the line at 12:30?
Okay.
What's, I would assume the school district's probably supplying the staffing, being paid the wage for the staff and for the janitorial duties, and is that, is that what the school district's providing?
Well, actually, my department is going to take care of the custodial piece of it too, as I assured Ty about that. We're actually going to be doing our own cleanup and everything afterwards. Pretty, we're going to be pretty self-sufficient and everything like that. And I actually had 14 staff that said they wanted to work. And I can, technically only, I'm thinking I'm only going to need three a day, unless it gets bigger and I'd have to add something. But at that point, we're going to be rotating them around, and they're kind of thinking, oh, I'll be working 20 days throughout the summer, and they're kind of excited about just the change pace. So it's neat to be able to see that, that many people that wanted to work.
One other question. How about, our district is, when you look at the miles that we cover, there's probably students or adults that could benefit from this program, and what comes to mind is transportation. What's, kind of some thoughts on that?
Well, for this year, as a pilot, we don't, we aren't providing any kind of transportation. I guess it would come down to what the program looks like and how it rolls out over the course of the summer. We'd have to assess at that time if we're going to go forward next year. And then maybe propose something different with maybe some transportation involved for some of those that could benefit from that.
Director Anderson, I just want to clarify, the reimbursement rate for the meal, we fully anticipate that covering the cost of the meal and the cost of the labor. So it will not be an expense to the district operating the summer lunch program, will not be an expense to the district. I just wanted to confirm that, if you can.
Anything else? Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll be excited to hear how it goes. So keep us updated, maybe after the first week last. It'll be great. All right, next, superintendent's report. Superintendent Larson.
Yes, Madam Chair. Real quick, Brandon Valley Middle School construction project, just want to let you know, the rain has impacted progress just a bit. Masonry work is in progress. The target completion for that is the first week in June. Beginning real soon, we will see roof joists and decking work on the music area, and then interior concrete floor slabs or concrete flat work also to begin here at the end of this week, beginning of next week. A very important date is May 30. That is the date that the demolition process will begin. I'm not saying they're going to start with the wrecking ball on the 30th, but they will begin with putting up barriers for dust and whatnot. We have informed and communicated with our staff regarding this date, and then also would ask anyone that needs to get into the middle school, starting May 30, 30, to use the northwest entrance to enter the middle school. And certainly want to remind everyone that the orange construction zone area is, you're to remain out of that area and outside of the safety zone behind the fence. Also want to note, no school board election is necessary. Petitions were due Friday, May 12. One petition was filed and validated, and we would certainly congratulate and welcome Ellie Saxer to a three-year term. So I just wanted to provide an update to the board on that item. Would also note that our strategic planning survey is open and available at the following, the following web location. It has been communicated to parents and guardians via email, and then also been placed in the newspaper. That will be open until the middle of June. Would certainly encourage all patrons to participate and provide feedback and insight through our strategic planning survey. And then just a couple of other items I want to note. Technology committee, if you would have, if you recall, in the 100-day entrance plan presentation that I submitted to the board, I talked a little bit about technology committee. I want you to know that this is not, the scope of this group specifically, the scope of this committee's work is relatively narrow. What we're going to do is, we are going to review an article from IT Leadership, Five Ways to Improve Your School Website Design. And then we are going to talk about school website addresses and structure. So like, for example, right now, the homepage for the district is brandonvalleyschools.k12.st.us backslash default, backslash home, backslash office, et cetera. And then the Brandon Valley School District dot k12.st.us is actually the high school's website. So we need to rearrange our structure a little bit to make certain that things flow correctly. We're also going to evaluate mobile access. Everyone has a smartphone now. Everyone's checking things on their smartphones. We want to evaluate how our websites look on our mobile devices. And then we're also going to look at it for usability and navigation and those types of things. So the objective of this group is going to be very narrow. We're not talking curriculum. We're not talking about number of devices. The objective is pretty straightforward. We're assessing our school district website, and then also beginning that conversation about our digital footprint, social media, some of those things, who controls them, et cetera. So that group will meet early June, and we're hopeful that our action plan is able to be completed prior to the start of the 17-18 school year to make our website and other usable technology, communication tools, better. I also want to note that the Brandon Lutheran Church parking lot agreement has dissolved, for lack of a better term. We met with Brandon Lutheran Church leadership, and there were some zoning and ordinance issues that they were working through and that, that arose. And ultimately, the church leadership felt as though it was best that they pursue their parking lot situation on their own. I would note that we will, we will entertain and work with them regarding the use agreement in the future, but as far as the purchase of that gravel parking lot, they've chose not to pursue that option, et cetera. So ultimately, that will not happen, and they are currently working through, through their parking lot upgrades and improvements themselves. And then I also just want to note that our annual meeting date, it's typically scheduled for the second Monday in July, which is July 10. I would propose that we change that meeting to Monday, July 17, and would ask the board to review their calendars. And if July 17 will not work, please notify me prior to the next meeting, as it will be an action item at our June 8 regularly scheduled board meeting. Would certainly entertain any questions that you have, Madam Chair.
Okay. Thank you very much, Superintendent Larson. That takes us to general business. Item number one, cast a ballot for South Dakota High School Activities Association, proposed amendment to Constitution and Bylaws.
Madam Chair, I would just note that South Dakota High School Activities Association Executive Board Member and our board member, Sandy Klatt, Activities Director Marso, and myself have discussed the proposed amendment, and the consensus is to, is a recommendation for a yes vote on the proposed amendment. Would certainly open it to Member Klatt for any additional comment.
This amendment, it closes a loophole that is important to close. So we are hoping all the member schools vote yes, and I would anticipate nearly every school that turns in a ballot would vote yes.
Any further questions for Mrs. Klatt or Superintendent Larson? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to cast a ballot for the South Dakota High School Activities Association Proposed Amendment to Constitution and Bylaws as a yes vote. So moved. Second. There's been a first and a second. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. That takes us to number two, cast the ballot for the South Dakota High School Activities Association Board of Directors, Division Two representative.
Again, Madam Chair, Member Klatt, Activities Director Marso, and myself have discussed the Division Two candidates. The consensus recommendation is to cast our vote for Steve Moore from Watertown High School. Again, would certainly defer to Member Klatt for any additional comments.
Both candidates. We're very blessed this time. Both candidates are excellent and high-quality candidates. I, it's hard to differentiate one from another, so I, you can't go wrong with a vote for either one of them, but ultimately, you have to pick one. So that's where we are.
We move to approve Steve Moore for Division Two Representative for the South Dakota High School Activities Association.
Second.
There's been a first and a second. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Superintendent Larson, would you lead us through the Brandon Valley School District Copy and Strategy formal recommendation?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair. I would note that at our last meeting, I had anticipated having this recommendation for you at the first meeting in June. However, we were able to move up our, our meeting, our sit-down with A&amp;B Business about a week. And then also, due to timing, it would be advantageous for this recommendation to come at this time to give us additional time throughout the summer to prepare for our 17-18 school year. So I just want to, real quick, highlight the teacher feedback data that we've received, also review the usage data, give you a side-by-side comparison of what our current copying strategy is, in comparison to what our recommended copying strategy is, provide you with a little bit of a budgetary impact on what is being recommended, and then ultimately, provide you with the formal recommendation. So, 57% of our teachers reported low or no usage of the print shop. 65% of our teachers reported no or a slight negative impact if the centralized copying strategy, known as the print shop, was eliminated. 66% of our teachers supported increasing the number of copy machines in our school buildings and eliminating the centralized copying strategy. Ultimately, 60%, 66%, strong majority, want additional copy machines in our buildings. However, that leaves 34% of our teachers who substantially use or want to keep the print shop. So what we went to is, we evaluated the potential for a hybrid model. I would reinforce the usage data. So as we, as we look at the usage data, here you can see approximately, in the 11-12 school year, about 7 million copies coming out of the print shop, and that has decreased to about 3.5 million copies anticipated for this year. In 11-12, we were making 700-some thousand copies in buildings, and that has increased to 3.2 million copies. So what we have seen is, we have seen a substantial increase with our building level copies being made and a decrease with our print shop. So, a side-by-side comparison. Ultimately, the current practice, the print shop has two machines, one duplicator and a full-time operator. Every building and/or department has one machine. The recommended practice, which we believe, which I believe, strongly supports our teachers' approach to providing classroom instruction and giving them what they need, the resources they need and desire to be successful in the classroom, is the print shop operates as is, but a but a reduced amount of time, ultimately reducing that position to an 18.75 hour per week position. It would remain 12 months, but would reduce the number of hours per week. And then it increases the building level number of machines. All elementarys, except Valley Springs, would have two machines. The intermediate school would have three machines, the middle school would have three machines, and the high school would have two machines. Those numbers are ultimately driven by the teacher feedback and the teacher data that we obtained through our action research. The intermediate school and the middle school, both of those schools have a strong desire to do in-building or building-level copying. The elementary schools and the high school both had more interest in continued usage of the print shop. So we ultimately put some of our resources into those teachers who wanted those machines. So estimated budgetary impact, currently the copying leases are $6,316 per month. With our recommendation or my recommendation, the copying leases will cost $6,500. So there is an increase there annually of $2,208.
You said that was $6,316 per month?
Yes.
So the difference is 2208 per year?
Yes, annually. Yes, annually. The personnel costs currently are approximately $47,000 and then with the recommendation and cuts due to being below the 20-hour work week, loss of benefits, et cetera, those costs are ultimately saved through the district. So moving to 18-hour per week position would be approximately $16,000 with a cost savings of $31,000. So annually, the savings is about $28,000. And then over the five-year lifespan of the copy machine leases, it's approximately So district copying strategy recommendation. My recommendation to the Board of Education is to approve two machines, one duplicator and one part-time operator position at 18 hours per week, which is a reduction in staffed hours at a 12-month position, and increasing the number of building-level machines to the amount shown within this specific recommendation. I would certainly entertain any questions that you may have.
Yeah. Could you go back one slide? I think it's one slide. Please. Okay. So we can add eight more machines for only $2,208 more dollars?
Yes.
How would you do that?
Well, through our work with A&amp;B Business, ultimately what I would say is the cost of technology from five years ago has been driven down some. Ultimately, we met with them, we looked at what we currently have, what we would like to have, and then they provided us with the cost of 6,500 even.
Wow, that's impressive. Good job.
And the new machines would include the ones in the print shop? Are those also leased?
Correct. So the print shop machines, what we currently have is we have an older one and we have a little bit of a newer one. What they're going to do is they're going to take the older one out and they will put in a newer machine. And then we also have a duplicator which runs our construction paper. I don't know if it was made in the 70s, but certainly the 80s and they're going to update that one as well. So ultimately, we will have new machines and I would note that they will all come off of their lease in five years. And at that point in time, we can have a conversation about, do you purchase or do you not? Because right now, that's not even a potential option, but we could reevaluate in five years.
Chair, I've got a question. Are we using the same, I'll call it, business? You use an A&amp;B Business, right? Is that who we are presently using?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's I need to know.
Now, does this kind of a project go out for bid to multiple bidders or do you typically work with the person that, you know, we've had a relationship with?
Short answer is you typically carry on with the vendor that you've been working with. It's not required to be bid. Mr. Lundberg, I would look to you for confirmation on that. Because statute allows for, I believe it's quoted under technology, whereas you don't have to utilize the bid law. Correct?
That is correct. That is correct. And the kicker in the whole thing, generally I would bid this out every four or five years. I do bid it out because there's 100 vendors that all want the business. The kicker in this situation is we're currently in lease arrangements and those leases have to be bought out. So dealing with another vendor would be impossible in this situation.
So that makes sense. Are we extending the lease with A&amp;B by doing this or are we just keeping, we're just adding machines for the same lease term that we already have?
Your lease will now be five years from this next year. So it's like five additional years.
And so if we, just to understand the scenario, if we were to buy them out, how many years are we buying out? How many years remain on the current leases that we have?
It's different. Our leases on our various machines are ranging from, maybe there's two years left, maybe there's five years left. And if you remember, in my previous presentation, I talked about, I think it was about $90,000 worth of lease buyout for cost if we were to buy out our leases and go with someone else. So it's just, it's not reasonable. It's unpractical, not something that we could manage at this point in time.
And is five years the only lease length that is available? And just wondering if we have some that are, we have some that are going to be going out five years already at this point, so that's kind of why we're at five?
Sure. I think it's standard. I think it's standard practice. I believe the, from the research that I've done regarding copy machines, is that eight years approximately, seven to eight years is the life expectancy of a copy machine, which is probably why you don't want to lease them. Too much longer or too much shorter, you know, they want to get them back with a little life in them. So I think five years is standard. You could seek, you know, anything that you, you know, you could seek three-year leases, but I would imagine that the cost will go up. And then also, if you extend it to like a 10-year lease, they're going to know that the last five years, there's going to be more maintenance, more of those things. So then they increase the cost as well. So I think five years is standard, the standard lease.
Any more questions?
Just a comment. Looks like these numbers are changing fairly rapidly and I think I compliment administration for doing the work they did, but I think it's something probably more importantly as we go forward to kind of keep an eyeball on it that might warrant other adjustments to be made to our program.
If no one has any further questions, I would entertain a motion to approve the Brandon Valley School District Copying Strategy recommendation given to us tonight?
I move to approve the recommendation.
Second.
There's been a first and a second. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Next, preliminary 17-18 annual budget presentation. Mr. Lundberg.
Okay, thank you. Provided all of you in your board packets a copy of the actual budget, the numbers, 100 pages worth of numbers would allow a child to try to do in the presentation is to ignore that 100 pages of numbers and just present some slides that'll hopefully put it in perspective, the budget that we're presenting tonight for you and the general public that might be interested in that. The first page of the 17-18 budget presentation are the revenues and expenditures from each of the funds. General fund, we have $25,875,000 of revenue, $26,134,000 of expenditures, which is a deficit of $259,000 that we're projecting. Back in January, when I put together a five-year plan, we predicted a deficit of about $250,000, so it's right in line with what we projected in January. The one thing I would point out at the expenditure level, $26 million, that's an increase of 3.7% over last year. And if you remember, you were only funded 0.3% from the state of South Dakota. So basically, you're increasing your budget an additional 3% over the money that you were allotted from the state of South Dakota. You ask how? It's basically management of the expenditures and growth of students. Last year, we were the recipient of growth from last year that was up and above what we accounted for and then we're anticipating another 100 kid enrollment. So that growth is a huge factor in allowing you to do more things. The capital outlay fund, $5,165,000 of revenues and $5,840,000 of expenditures, means a $675,000 deficit. That was projected to spend $700,000 in January of fund balance with the projects that we have going, the main project being the middle school addition and office remodel. So that's less than what we projected back in January. The special education, $5.7 million revenue, $5,640,000 in expenditures. That's a positive balance of $58,000 and we have to continue that in that special education fund. We've pretty much drained the fund balance in there, so we're trying to rebuild that over the next couple of years and we have to really keep an eye and continue to do that. The pension fund, basically is just an expenditure fund now, as you remember. We're paying early retirement payments out of that fund. We have a fund balance in there. We will this year, next year, and the following year be able to pay the early retirement balances out of there. So like I said, it's just an expenditure fund, so it's going to show a deficit until we run out of fund balance in that account, which will probably be not next year but the following year. Bond redemption fund, $2.8 million revenues and expenditures. And the food service fund, $2.4 million of revenue and $25,000 less in expenditures. The next slide is the, I'd just like to take you through the funding formula for the general fund. The state of South Dakota will, has changed the funding formula last year when we went through with the teacher enhancement, salary enhancement proposal. And the whole formula now is driven off, the key figure in there that they look at is the teacher salary. You know, last year was $48,500, this year is $48,646. But no matter how you slice the formula, it's still a per pupil expenditure-driven formula. But it's more beneficial for everybody, I believe, that they show that the formula is based on teacher salary rather than the number of students. You can go through all these calculations and see the addition and subtraction there. The bottom line is on the second or third line there, the enrollment, 4,030, that's our projected enrollment. If you change that to 4,031, you will add $5,500 to the bottom line. So each child is worth $5,500. Like I said, you can go through and do the math. They have the salary target there of $48,646 plus overhead, or benefits of 29%, overhead of 31.04%. Gives us a total need of $16,859,000 with salary and benefits, the overhead of 5.2% and limited English proficiency need of $26,000. $22 million total need. What we can generate locally is just under $7.5 million, so our state aid will be $14,667,000. Feel free to interrupt me if you have any questions as we go here. The next slide, just...
Let me just ask you one question and then we'll figure it out first. I want to just, and you don't need to go back to the slide, but the pension fund being reduced, I just want to clarify, that is because the legislature changed the way that that was categorized, so that pension, those pension fund expenses are being rolled into the general fund?
Eventually, they will be, yes.
Once we have exhausted the...
The entire levy, the capability of the levy in that fund was eliminated by the legislature. So yes, we're spending what we had built up in there and then in two years, it'll be rolled into the general fund. Correct.
And so then we will be needing to meet those obligations out of the general fund?
Correct.
Okay. Just want to clarify that.
Which is what we've looked at, that in the five-year plan and it's a line item in the five-year plan to anticipate that.
Just for clarification, because that sounds odd that we would have a fund that would be going away, right? We're just clarifying why.
Right. The next slide, just the general fund budget shows the, how much is instructional, support services, 61% instructional, support services, 36%, activities, 3%. Way it's been for quite a number of years. The spread doesn't change too much. The next chart shows the elementary class sizes, kindergarten through sixth grade. You're looking at 20, just under 21 in the kindergarten, 18 in the junior kindergarten, 22 in first grade, 23 in second grade, 22.7 in third grade, 23 in fourth grade. And we jump up quite a bit in fifth and sixth grade, 28 and 27. Those classes are pretty large. It's a, how that's maintained is just a different scheduling environment. The fifth and sixth grade now with the intermediate school is scheduled more like a middle school. So those numbers jump up. The next slide shows the total enrollment projections for 17-18. Now, as I said, we're projecting 100 kid enrollment increase, 4,030. I believe that's a conservative number. You can see the 17-18 numbers versus the 16-17 in each elementary, middle school, and high school. I really think that's a conservative number. I anticipate that we could probably pick up another 10 students in the elementary, 10 in the middle school, and probably 25 in the high school. High school is sometimes a different creature, you know, you just can't tell how many going in, coming out, moving in, moving out, and that fluctuates a little bit. So we could easily have another 40 kids in there.
I want to pause for a brief moment and let the public know that you should be commended for your accuracy and I think people wonder how you do it. Like we were, are wondering if you study the birth records at the hospitals or something because it's always very accurate and we appreciate that because that helps our numbers.
I call some of the younger couples in the district and find out what's going on.
Business Manager Lundberg, I just want to note for the 17-18 elementary class sizes, kindergarten, we actually just recently added another section of kindergarten to Faye. Remember, you approved two positions that were to be determined back in March, so we could get ahead of that hiring game. So we actually have 16 sections of kindergarten. So that kindergarten enrollment number is going to be a little lower than that, probably more in that 18, 18 and 1/2. And then I would also note that we have one growth position ultimately still remaining. So one teacher to be assigned a location in August, which could potentially be fifth, sixth grade ELA, seventh, eighth grade ELA, maybe second grade if that grows. So I just want the public to know that there are 16 sections of kindergarten and that number will go down. So ultimately, turn it back to you, Mr. Lundberg.
Just a question about that. So that number's already pretty low in kindergarten and in first grade, it's at 22.4. Is there a reason that you opted to reduce kindergarten further and leave first grade at that number?
Yes. Short story is, we see our higher open enrollment numbers come into kindergarten, so by reducing that number right now, we can accept enrollment, meaning we'll see more kindergarten enrollment numbers. Also, as we evaluate, as we evaluate the higher need areas, that's what we identified as being the most important at that point in time to allow for the enrollment numbers to come in. So we were at 20, so we're 23, 24 at kindergarten, we were able to reduce those down to that 19 number and then also still continue to accept open enrollment in accordance to board policy. Turn it back to you, Paul. Is this the right one?
Yep. This is on the detail of the general fund expenditures. As you can see, we went up $934,000, 3.7% on funding that was at 0.3%. So that's a key thing to remember, that your budget is up over 3% compared to the funding that you actually receive from the state of South Dakota. Where that $934,000 went, it's itemized in generalities on the bottom of that page. It's not by the letter. Those numbers are rounded off to make it fit into the, there's a lot more numbers that go into that whole thing than that. $365,000 of salary increases, 2% across the board. Utilities, this is, went up quite substantially. We had a 5% increase in our electric rate this year. And it's amazing, when you look at these numbers, and you'll see it in some of the other charts and stuff, Brandon Valley spends about a million dollars a year on utilities. It seems like, you know, as a school board, it'd be very nice to be able to utilize that for educational purposes, but it's all part of the cog to keep the buildings open and whatnot. In total, it's about a million dollars a year. Additional staff, $330,000. In January, I told you that we were working on transferring those CEIS positions and nurse positions back into the general fund. Back then, I had projected one of those positions to get back in the general fund. We actually got two of them. We have one CEIS and one nurse back into the general fund. So there's only one CEIS left in the special education fund.
Was the reason for the early, for the decision to do two rather than one, is it just a special, it needs in the special ed fund? Is it just a special, it needs in the special ed fund?
Yes, the needs in the special ed fund, and plus to allow us more flexibility on those CEIS positions.
Yeah, I knew the first one, the reading specialist made difference, but I just figured out the nurse.
Right. The nurse was, that I just needed to get that back in due to the needs that are, are out there. It was more of a general fund position, and I couldn't do them all. But we'll be one year ahead of schedule that we were on a three-year. This will put us on a two-year to get those positions back. We had an increase in Title I funding of about $70,000 of federal program, so that reduced our general, our regular funding, or expenses. Retirement staff savings of $55,000, and then the catch-all is increase in purchase services and materials and supplies of $120,000. So that's what comprises the $934,000 in increase in the general fund. The next slide just shows the number of staff we have compared to the number of students that we have in the district for the past 25 years or whatever it is there. You can see, obviously, the increases that go throughout the years. The next slide shows the per pupil allocations since '97, '98 compared to now. As you can tell by the chart, the dollar amount this year is right at $5,500. The bottom slide is the percentage increase. Had a few peaks and valleys here the last few years. The valley being when we were cut our funding, 8.6%. And then the peak being when the law was changed for the teacher salary enhancement of 11%. The next slide shows the educational costs, funds, per pupil costs of the large school districts, data from '15, '16. You've seen this data before. It just shows where Brandon Valley ranks as opposed to the other large school district. Our teacher salary policy is, will, has and will increase our per pupil expenditure level, but will still remain one of the lowest in the, in the district, or in the, in the state as compared to our colleagues. You can see the ESD average of $7,360 versus Brandon Valley at $7,149, and the state of South Dakota average at $8,369. Question that's come up in the past is, why aren't all these numbers the same? Because we all get funded on a per pupil expenditure level, why aren't, why doesn't everybody spend the same amount of money? There's a number of factors that go in there. The two biggest ones are opt-outs. We do not have an opt-out. A lot of these schools have an opt-out. And federal funding is another big piece of the thing. We do not receive a lot of federal funding. The next slide is the general fund balance history. This is a, I think, a really good slide, you as a board member. When we showed the first slide where we had $259,000 of projected deficit, it's a managed deficit, I call it. I mean, it's, it's responsible, it's a responsible deficit, and this kills my coffee shop guys when I make that comment, but it really is responsible, and it's indicated or evidenced by these charts. We manage this fund balance very, very well. Especially, the second part of that is the percentage of expenditures at right around that 20% level. The dollar amount obviously varies with the, with the budget. The budget keeps going higher and higher and higher, so the dollar amount's going to go, it's the percentage of the expenditures that is where the real management comes in there, and you can say that's fairly stable throughout the timeframe there, managing it right at the 20% level. The general fund revenue of $25,875,000, where the money comes from, you can see down in the pie graph, 60% from state sources, 32% from local. I think it's kind of not funny, but it's ironic that our operating transfer from the capital outlay fund is as much as our federal revenue. We transfer the same amount of money from the capital outlay fund to help out the general fund in the same amount that our federal revenue in total is. So you can see those percentages. The next slide is the other revenue history. And you've seen these slides, the bank franchise tax. Took a nice bump this year that we talked about earlier. Actual revenue was about $550,000. Next year, I'm budgeting for $475,000. That takes care of the general fund. The capital outlay fund has $5.8 million of expenditures. 11.6% is that operating transfer of $675,000. 17% of the budget is for technology, just under $1 million. 44% is for facility improvements, $2.5 million. Transportation, 5%, $302,000. And I think it's key, the debt service in the capital outlay is only less than 10%, $554,000. You as a district are, you're able to go up to 50% of your capital outlay levy used for debt, and a lot of districts do that. But it doesn't take rocket science to figure out, if you're not spending 50% of your capital outlay on debt, guess what? You get to spend it on the technology, facility improvements, and the other categories that are all here. So 10% of your total levy going to debt is a good, good number. That's reflected, the next slide, with our only debt in that fund is a portion of the intermediate school financing. We spend $550,000 a year for the debt service on that. The special education fund now for 17, 18 is $5,642,000. It's up $175,000 from the previous year. That's an increase of 3.2%. Funding levels in the special education were the same, up 0.3%. So did the same in the special ed fund as you did in the general fund. We have to work very hard, as I said before, to manage our, to the best of our ability expenses. It's a very difficult situation in special education fund, but we have to do the best we can to build that fund balance back up, which we're trying. The revenue from the spec ed fund follows, 47% local, 41% state, and 13% federal. If the goals were all met, the federal and the local should probably be switched around. The goal, I think, when I first started in the position was 40% that the federal government wanted to fund. Been a little short on that. That, the next fund is the pension fund, as we talked about before. That fund lost all of its taxing ability in 2016 legislature, so what we have in there is a fund balance, and we're utilizing that to pay our early retirement costs for the next couple of years. After next year, which we're spending $279,000, we'll have $350,000 left. So approximately another year of funding the early retirement payments. The next fund is the bond redemption fund. And this really, as I've said before, is reflective of, of your guys' management of the school district funds throughout the years. The Brandon Valley School District is rated at a AA Stable Bond rating by S&amp;P, which is an extremely good rating. It's one, only a handful of schools in the state have that high rating. So the financial situation is very strong. We have a very low debt-to-asset ratio. And key thing here is, and this has happened a number of times, and it just doesn't happen, it's due to planning. You'll see Robert Bennett Elementary Debt Service will come off in '21, 2021, just a couple of years from now. And then, when and if it's the time that we need to build another building, we can roll that, that debt service into another bond issue and literally tell the people, no additional tax. And truthfully say that. The food service fund slide, the projection there is an increase of 5 cents per meal. Increase of 5 cents across the board per meal. So down at the bottom, lunch, K6, this year is 265, go up to 275. Everything is plus 5 cents. The property valuations in the district are projected to be $1,767 million next year. That's an increase of 5%. I think it, quite curious that that increase of 5% is $86 million. That's larger than probably 50% of the total valuations of most of the school districts in the state of South Dakota are increased. The valuation chart shows on the following slide, we had a nice increase last year of 8.9%, and I'm projecting 5.2% next year. You know, now we don't get the, we only get the rate of inflation on, on your home. If your home goes up 10% next year, I'd only get the 1% inflation. I don't get to recoup all that. It's just new construction plus the rate of inflation. So that is, squelch down a little bit from what we've been able to recoup in the past years. You're not going to see the 11% years. The mill levies follow for this year versus what they're projected to be next year. Roughly, the ag levy will go down 2%. The owner occupied levy will go down 4%, and the commercial levy will go down 5% in percentages. That's the state sets that levy. The last slide is the, what a typical homeowner in Brandon Valley School District would pay in property taxes. And this is an actual scenario of a home in Brandon. From all the years that are listed there, 2004, your total tax liability was $2,646 for that home. In 2017, your total tax liability is $3,400. It's an increase of 2% a year. Now, what I did want to show on this, and you'll see it on the bottom there, 2004 versus 2017, the spread of the taxes. The spread in 2004 was 61% school, 21% city, and 18% county. 2017, that spread is 54% school, 25% city, 21% county. The school taxes in that whole scenario have gone up an average of 1% a year. That 2004, 2017, the 13 years, are average of 1% a year. County has gone up 4%, and the city has gone up 4%. So that's where that spread is. When I first started here in 1990, I think the spread was 70% with school taxes. So you can't really say that when that taxpayer out there says it's all you, it's not all you guys. You're only a 54% of the total tax bill on a home in Brandon Valley School District. That's all I had. You can review the, the actual numbers in their entirety, and, and this is just the preliminary budget. We'll have some changes, I'm sure, by the time we officially adopt in Jan, July.
I had a quick question about the mill levies. Are we opting to lower those, or did the legislature set those lower?
Legislature sets those levies each year. So the general fund and the special education fund are sent by the legislature. You guys set the capital outlay fund and bond redemption fund. Are the only two that you have any leeway on?
Hmm.
In our capital outlay fund, we always tax at the max.
Okay.
As we can. No.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lundberg.
Good, thank you.
Appreciate it very much. All right, that takes us to general business items number one through four. I would entertain a motion to approve those as presented tonight.
Move to approve general business items one through four.
Second?
There's been a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. That takes us to personnel items, number one through 11. I would entertain a motion to approve those as presented tonight.
So move--
Second. Oh, Greg got it.
There's been a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Three items there for information only on some transfers. Under communication, there are multiple thank yous there to the Board of Education and Administration. If you would review those. That takes us to board reports. Does anyone have a formal one they'd like to talk to tonight?
I just want to mention one thing from the Personnel Committee. One of the things I noticed going through these approvals on teacher hiring was that it seemed like we had a lot of candidates, more than I've remembered seeing in the past. And I checked with a couple principals just for gut feel, are they feeling like they're seeing more candidates? And I certainly didn't talk to all of them, but it sounds like there's a chance that we're seeing a deeper pool of candidates for teachers, which is great. That's what we want. We want to see a really rich pool of candidates to choose from. And I would just, that's completely anecdotal, non-scientific, but the thing is, let's keep looking at that. I would urge you as a board to keep watching that, because one of the goals of the Personnel Committee, I think with the support of Mr. Lundberg and the business office and, you know, the whole district staff, is really to keep raising our teacher salaries so that we are competitive and we're able to attract the candidates that we, you know, we have a deep pool of candidates to choose from at the beginning. And I'm excited to see that they may be beginning to see some evidence that that's working, but I certainly think we should keep a close eye on that, because that's really a good thing if it's happening.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Haglen. Anyone else? Hearing none. There are a couple travel reports there for your review. That takes us to the end of our scheduled meeting. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn?
Second.
There's been a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much, everyone.